Okay, TB 79, we will go ahead and get started. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, April 8th, 2024. Thanks everyone for coming. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. First Selectman's report. First of all, big game tonight, Yukon, go. We were going to try very hard to finish this game at least by, you know, last 10, or this, this, this game.
It's not a game.
We're going to finish this game to go to that meeting at 9:20. Okay. Couple of things going on. Folks at TV News 12 have taken an interest in Great Island, and so I had a chance to be interviewed out there, and they took some great drone footage. What's interesting that came of that was that there've been some restrictions placed on the acquisition of Chinese-made drones by the federal government for federal agencies, and that's something that's being considered in Connecticut. And News 12 is actually going to back out here on Friday to interview me, the chief and the captain, as well as the CEO of a company that actually make, a US-based company that makes drones here in Connecticut. So stay tuned for that, it should be, should be pretty interesting. I did want to say a couple of things about the swap shop. It was slated to open on April 1st, and we are going to open the swap shop. There's a few things that we're working on to tighten up, if you will, a bit. One of them has to do with access to the swap shop and making sure that anyone who's coming in from out of town, to the extent that they're crossing the street there, it's been deemed something that's dangerous, and we'd like to get that cleaned up, and we've got a plan in place to, to correct that. In addition, we're working on the rules and guidelines for our volunteers and making sure that those rules have been refreshed. All, all of our volunteers are actually also going to have vests and name tags for identification, and we think with a few of these changes here that the swap shop will be a better experience for everyone. So I'm waiting on a small committee that's overseeing that effort to let me know when they're ready. The minute they're ready, the swap shop will open the next day. So stay tuned, swap shop's not closing, just give us a little bit of time to straighten out a few of those things. On March 20th, I had breakfast with the Senate Majority Leader, Senator Bob Duff. He represents mostly Norwalk, but a little piece of Darien, and it was a very good conversation. We recognized the mutual interest in working for the citizens, certainly in this town, but in this immediate area, and I really appreciated the outreach from his office to sit down and have breakfast. I had really only met him once, and so to have a chance to sit down for an hour and a half and just exchange views, I, I really appreciated that, and I look forward to meeting with him again, as well as the other legislators that represent Darien who are in this area. Some of you may notice that we appointed a new town historian, so this week, we're going to be celebrating our retiring town historian. Her name is Marian Castell, whom I've known for a long time and a dear friend. She's been the town historian for, well, a long, long, like, a really long time. But Ms. Sarah Kena, who has been the president of the Darien Historical Society, and someone I've also worked with for a long time, she is going to, she's now assuming that role, and we are going to be celebrating Marian's retire, retirement later this week. But congratulations to Sarah, and thanks, job well done to Marian, it's terrific. Let's see, what else do I want to talk about? On the 26th, I attended a meeting of the Mental Health Task Force. Marcy Meddick's not with us tonight, but she's been the Board of Selectmen representative for that group. What a terrific organization. You'd be surprised just the energy and dedication of the folks who were gathered there that day. I had a chance to listen to their various initiatives, and had a chance myself to offer my time to be of assistance to them, but I just wanted to thank everybody who is a member of that task force and for all the work they do, that is, remains an extraordinarily important topic, and having dedicated volunteers to try and help us manage that, that challenge is, I think, really terrific. You also note that we had our retirement and send-off party for Chief Don Anderson, and we, we thought about having a nice dinner for him, but he said, "No, I don't want any rubber chicken, I just want a pizza truck," and so we had a pizza truck for him out in front of the police department. A lot of fun and a great send-off for him. We're equally excited. Chief Marin, who's now been promoted into that position, is with us here tonight, so congratulations, chief. And also Captain Udima's been promoted to, what is it, chief of, I'm sorry, I can't remember what that division, thank you, that, so. But congratulations to you both, we really appreciate your, your long service to this I had a chance to attend, speaking of police, yesterday, there was a benefit that was organized for Detective Greg Benedetto of the Darien Police Department, who's faced some health challenges, and the sheer volume of people that turned out for this event at the Piedmont Club yesterday, it started at about 1:00. The chief was there, well, all of you were here, were there. I don't, were there 400 people, 300, a vast crowd of people parked everywhere they could find parking places, and it's just a testament to the dedication of that officer that was being honored, but also the family that is the Darien Police Department. It was not just the chief who was there, there were three retired chiefs, countless retired officers and active-duty officers. It was amazing, and it's just a reminder how having an organization that's like a family, as we have with many organizations here in town, but to see that on full display yesterday was one of the most impressive things I've seen, and you all, you all lead an amazing department with amazing men and women there. It was a privilege to be there. Okay, that's all I have today. Kate?
I feel like it's the same old, same old. We're still in negotiations with, with Town Hall Union, the kind of the old version. We will be starting soon with the dispatchers group. We're getting ready for employee evaluations, we've been working on a lot of projects, and we're hopefully wrapping up the Park and Rec Director Search soon, and embarking on the Health Director Search. That position has been posted and closes, I think, the end of the month.
Okay. Thank you. Board Liaison Reports, Mr. Burke.
The Blight Review Board met on March 13th with four members. We actually are data member, we need a new representative from the Human Services Council to get back to full strength, but we reviewed 13 properties. The highlight is that one of the blighted properties is potentially going to close, which we had a conversation with the ownership entities, and we talked about the lien, and we negotiated the lien a little bit, but there could actually be a fine payment with the closing of this property in a few weeks. Also, on the good side of the ledger, there were two properties that we dropped from the list because they had progress, no longer blighted, and there was one commercial property that, when we dug down on it, was, didn't really meet the standard. So that's coming off the list, and we meet the day after tomorrow for our monthly meeting.
Perfect. Thank you, and I know you're going to help oversee kind of the further review of our town council and all of that, and I just want to thank you for, for having volunteered for that, and over the course of this year, there's a ton of things about that that I know you'll be able to sharpen up for us, given your professional background, so thank you, I appreciate it. Monica?
So for Great Island, despite the significant work and the effort from our town employees and town officials, we unfortunately found out at the bid opening last Thursday that we received no bids for the road widening project 23A. So Ed Gentile, our Director of Public Works, is looking into reasons why this happened and considering our next steps, which could include, obviously, rebidding. On a more positive note, the committee was very pleased that 16 firms responded to the RFQ for the master planning for Great Island, and the committee chose six, six firms to continue. Those proposals are due April 18th at 4:00. All six firms were, were very interested. I took them out for individual tours, which lasted about an hour and a half, two hours for each one individually.
In perfect weather?
And it was, it was beautiful.
Maybe not.
It was like one of those days, all day, but that's okay, that's okay. They saw it, you know, not at its finest, but that's all right. So anyhow, all the firms were very, very interested, and we're looking forward to opening our bids on 18th at 4:00. And I've rescheduled the Great Island Advisory Committee meeting for the 18th, that same night, for 6:30, so we'll have that information at hand. And that's it. Thank you. Okay. Two quick updates, one for Thriving Youth, the last meeting was on Thursday, March 21st, and they had focused on some efforts on some information for following week, well, that week, also for their National Jordan Alcohol Day in this week, and had sent out a bunch of information and tips and so forth to folks. They've also got some upcoming events that are coming up, and one of which is on April 23rd, talking about smartphones, social media, and your kids, and that's at the Darien Library from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and you can register via the, it's, well, it's sponsored by the group Okay to Delay, Darien, and it's sponsored by the Depot and the Darien Library, and you should be able to register right at darienlibrary.org. And then there are two YW parent awareness events for parents and children. One is girl talk and one is guy talk for, for kids, and one is on April 25th for the girls and for May 2nd for the boys. So you can check out the YWCA site and you can register for those. The next meeting is on Thursday, May 16th, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
And for Henley Homes and Royal, we are not meeting this week as we originally had planned, we don't have a lot to meet, so we're going to meet next Wednesday. We are starting to move on, during April break, when the kids are out, they're going to start getting ready, the sites for the trailers that will be coming in to work, and we are sending out information, I think this week, to the neighbors to let them know, here's what's happening. The trailer should be coming in in May, and work will begin soon as school, so it's exciting.
Okay, thank you. Public comments. Do we have anybody here who would like to make some public comments this evening? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. So new business and transfers, so the first thing we're going to talk about is the Weed Beach Meadow Project. So as a review, this project has been under development by the Parks and Rec Commission for a while, and Lori, thank you for coming here, and Jim, for coming here this evening. That project was developed by Weston and Sampson, and there was a gentleman who's an architect there named Dan Beggs. They spent a lot of time developing this project, and it was done in concert with a lot of meetings and discussions with others. So when Weston and Sampson developed this project, they came up with a, an estimate of about $1 million. I had thought that that was more of a guess, but it turns out they actually did spend quite a bit of time to come up with that figure and based it on some previous work that they had done. You will recall that the Darien Foundation had generously agreed to support this project to the tune of $350,000, and so the delta between that million and the 350, call it 650, was what we estimated the town's cost for developing this project would be. So we put that out for bid, we received two bids for that project. Both of those bids were in excess of $1.9 million, almost twice as much money as we thought this project was going to cost. So what I'd like to recommend that we do is, is the following, is to table this project for now and not vote to recommend it for consideration by the Board of Finance, and instead send it back to the Parks and Recreation Commission. What I would say about the project is that I believe that it was well-designed, and by that I mean not just the concept of the project, which was to balance environmental and nature concerns with having a place that provides additional recreation for people who live here in town, and also to clean up a property that has lain fall for quite some time after we approved that, what, now it's more than 10 years, if I recall, Kate?
Yes.
It gives, it gives us a chance to redevelop that property in a way that turns it into a terrific addition to one of our best municipal assets, which is Weed Beach. And so I think that the balance of nature preservation, of environmental concerns with regard to invasives and flood mitigation and all of that, in addition to just the recreational nature of the property, once it was, once it would have been completed, I've remained very supportive of that. I think it was well-designed, and I think the Parks and Rec Commission would do well to keep what they have, and if they go forward to make changes, to keep in mind those benefits that I laid out. But in any case, we are still not prepared to act on that right now, given the difficult budget year that we find ourselves in. It just didn't feel like the right thing to do to put forward now a $2 million project, given those concerns. In addition to tabling this and sending it back to Parks and Recreation, there are, there was clearing done on that property in one area that entailed removing invasives, dead trees, but also some mature trees that in retrospect maybe should not have been taken out. There've been requests by the public that we take a look at that to try and have an interim solution that would restore and park that area, or do something to mitigate the clearing that had been done, while we wait to decide what to do with the short-lane property itself in the future. So in addition to sending this back to Parks and Rec, what I'd like to do is ask them to take a look at those requests and those needs, and see if you can come up with a plan that would be both an interim solution to that issue, as well as longer-term, which you'd like to recommend for development of that property, and we will see what the future holds for that. But that would be my recommendation. Does anyone have any, on the board, have any questions or comments?
You know, I can see the, you know, the logic in proceeding on this basis. Perhaps one thing that could be considered, when it goes back to the commission, is what are the priorities and things that could be done within the budget figure that we were all anticipating? And if there are some things that would really help right now, but that isn't to say that it couldn't be done in steps over a period of time, so maybe looking at it through that lens and coming back with a, you know, a priority list and with a cost, you know, associated with that.
Thank you. Other comments?
I totally agree with Mike. I know there was a lot, a lot of work put into this project, and it was, it was scaled back, but I'm hoping that you can come back with it scaled back a little bit more to fit this number, because I'd like to see something done there for sure.
Yeah. Last comment I'd have is I know there are some folks here who have been involved in the project, not on the commission, but as interested parties or neighbors or people that literally cross the street, and I just wanted to thank you all for coming here tonight and listening to this. We hear your voices. In my many years in town government, I can confirm that there are very few decisions where 100% of the people are satisfied with every aspect of that decision, which means that you have to have a dialogue in these things, and all of you engaging in this dialogue on this project, that means that we're going to get to the answer that works for as many people as possible, something that is the best for the town. So thank you for everyone, both volunteers on the commission, as well as citizens who are engaged and interested in this project. I do appreciate your input. But as I said, we will table this for now, remand it back to Lori and the Parks and Rec Commission, and Jim, and let's, let's see what happens next, so that's that. Okay. Next up to bid, we have some variety of transfers, bid waivers, and a lot going on here, so let's take the first one. Discuss and take action on a request to transfer $11,000 from the ARPA Baker Park Swings account to the ARPA Replace Baker Park Playground Equipment Account. Kate?
Mr. Codlin is here too.
Oh, Jim, all right.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I promise I'll get you out of here before the Yukon game. It's hopefully a simple transfer. About three years ago, the Board of Education contacted us before they started construction at Oxbridge Elementary School. They had a swing set that they were going to have to get rid of because of the construction, and they wanted to know if we had use for it. The park that does not have swing sets is Baker Park, so it made sense for us at the time to take that swing set. Became part of the ARPA funding after we got an estimate of how much it would be to install that at Baker Park. Along the way, we decided to have ARPA funding to replace the entire playground at, at Baker, so we're just asking to transfer that $11,000, that's designated for the swing set, to, to the project to replace the entire playground. So as part of that, hopefully we'll be able to use that swing set, and we have, we'll pick a vendor that could, could hopefully use that swing set in part of that, part of that project.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Any questions?
I'm, I'm a little bit confused. Is, is there a swing set there now?
No.
No, there's not.
There's a playground.
Okay, but I thought you were getting the Oxridge.
We did, but it hasn't been installed yet. So what they're doing is combining the funding, so that will pay one vendor to do the new playground and installation of the swing set.
Okay, so the 11 is for the installation?
Correct, of the swing set, yep.
Well, it goes into the overall account where they're also buying other playground equipment. They just, they don't have to spend it to actually buy a swing set.
Right, so there was never a swing set included in the 150 that's already there?
No, I think the idea was we're going to have that swing set that, that was at Oxridge, put at, put at Baker, but we're, we're waiting, we're waiting on that.
Okay. Other comments?
No.
Okay, motion to approve? Mike moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, next up, take, discuss and take action on a request for a transfer of $11,871 to the Rotten Heights Fire Department retaining wall account.
And we have Sean Boland here.
Mr. Boland.
So I, probably about a year ago, came, excuse me, came in front of you guys and asked for $40,000, $41,000 to start the whole process for the retaining wall. We're moving along, I have a set of bid specs and everything, basically, I want to say about 95% done. Kate and I have been going through a couple things, and the engineer will update that stuff, but basically, when I came for the original request, we just came for the step one. Now we're going on to like steps three, four, and five. Step three is the bidding process of sending it out to bid and having the, excuse me, the engineer take care of all the bidding for us, basically, going through, making sure everything is apples to apples, and then also doing the filing for us for the building permit and stuff like that. And then the reason why I'm coming back also is because we originally estimated $9,000 for the core samples, and it came in at $14,000. So that's where part of that, part of that money, part of that came from. So the $5,000 is for the bidding process, and that was all in the signed contract we did way back at the very beginning. I believe you guys had copies of that way back, and if you need another copy, I can get it to you. I believe, Kate, you still, do you have that?
The?
The original contract?
I'm sure we do, not with me tonight, but yes.
But it's, it was all in there. And then basically filing for the permit, they do it on an hourly basis. I figured it'd take, take them about five hours, but we're going to talk, and I'm part of the building department, so I might try and help and just file the permit for us and not, and eliminate that cost, but I just want to have some play, basically.
I think this is fine. When do you expect to have bids for the entire project?
I'm hoping to go out to bid probably within, depending on how we want.
I think we just need them to make those changes to the bid doc, because we got it as a PDF, so some of the things that we needed to change, we don't, you know, we have to go back to them to do it.
Yeah, and I already went back to them, they said they'll make the changes, but I, I also, I, I know we talked, I don't know, are we going to go out to bid before we have all the money approved?
I expect we will. The estimated cost for the work is about $1.7 million.
Correct.
Yeah. So I prefer that we go out to bid and get firm numbers before we actually ask for the approbation.
And can you remind me what these core samples are? What are you sampling?
Basically, they drill down into the, behind the wall and in front of the wall to figure out what kind of dirt we have, and to see if there's any oil products or any kind of abatement that we would have to do.
What's a contamination assessment?
Contamination, and it all came back clean.
Okay. Questions for Sean?
Do you know why it was that the, you know, the estimate, the actual cost was so much greater than the estimate?
We, when we, when we, when I came, they didn't, they couldn't tell me an exact number of how much the, so I just, unfortunately, just picked a random number, and I, from talking to them, they said it would be about nine, but unfortunately, they did an extra sample, just because the way everything was. Thank you.
So Sean, I have, I have a question on the $5,000 for the vendors for the bidding process. I don't understand this. Was that in the original contract?
Yes, it was, but we.
So then why is it?
But when I, when I first originally went, went to you guys, we just was trying to get the ball rolling, just tried to get the, the bid process going and all that, and then I didn't, I guess it's partially me, I didn't look all the way down at all the other numbers that were, that we needed to, to figure for, so I just, I wanted to get the ball rolling, get this, the bid, get the bid packet done, and then figure out what we, what our next steps were. And it seems like we're, we're trying to move pretty quick, and it's just the way timing.
And it will be worthwhile to have them.
Yes.
On this.
Right. And then the permitting, are you, is it somebody that's just doing the paperwork, or are they actually helping you through the whole process?
It'd be somebody that.
Going to meetings?
It'll be basically filing for the building permit is what they, what they would do, but since I'm part of the department, I'm going to try and take care of that for us, because I, I know there's a couple other steps. I know I need to talk to planning and zoning, I need, we need to go for special approval for them. I've already talked to Jeremy about that, so there's some other, some other steps that we need to, to do before, and I want to try and get those lined up and, and set, but trying to figure out when bidding is and all that, we're, I don't want to.
Okay. Other questions for Sean? Okay. Motion to approve the transfer of $11,871. Sarah moves. Mike second, all in favor? Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, discuss and take action on a request to transfer $40,000 from the ARPA Water Main Extension to the ARPA Upgrade Catch Basins Account. Kate?
This is actually similar to what Park and Rec requested. These are two fire commission appropriations, both to make improvements at the drill grounds. So to put in catch basins and improve the drainage, and so they've asked us to combine the projects, I think based on their current cost estimates, it'd be more advantageous to them to have it as one project.
Okay. Any questions for that? Okay. Motion to approve the transfer of $40,000 to the Catch Basins Account. Mike moves, Sarah second, all in favor? Okay, thanks. All right. Next up is a number of investments for our police department, and there's several of them here, some which will require some bid waivers, but these are all, these all need to be taken care of now. I've heard some of the details, but we have the chief and captain here to help us with this this evening, so you folks would like to take it from here.
Okay. Do you want me to go in any particular order, or?
Well, first up actually is we're going to discuss and take action on a request for a bid waiver for the replacement of the police department server room air conditioning, and then right after that, the transfer of that amount to cover the cost of $67,500. So we'll start with that one?
Yes. Okay, so a couple months ago, no, weeks ago, we found out that the air conditioner in our server room, which houses all of our computer equipment, had a leak. DPW came by, they've tried multiple times to fix the unit. It's at an age as that of the building, so 13 years now, and the cost of repairing it isn't worth repairing it based on the age. So DPW is suggesting that we need to get a new system, and this is a time-sensitive issue, the fact that it's housing all of our computer equipment, which is very costly, and basically runs our 911 system and our computers in the police department.
Okay. And you've gotten, you've gotten bids for this, correct?
Yes, so DPW collected a couple bid, well, not bids, quotes.
You got a quote, yeah, sorry.
So yes, this was the most conservative quote that we've received.
This is F and F mechanical there? Got it, okay.
And it is with a company that we've, the town has used, so they trust them.
Got it, okay. So the first thing that we would need to decide here is taking action on a request for a bid waiver. Kate, do you want to talk about that?
Well, I think it's justified based on the urgency.
Right. So what this entails is that instead of requesting multiple bids for this, that we simply go with this trusted vendor for this amount of money, and we'll waive the requirements that this be put out to bid. We've got a few more of those, given there are several urgent investments that they need to make, and so that's the reason for that. Does anyone have any questions about either the bid waiver or the project itself?
I mean, you feel, Captain, you feel very confident in the, in the entity that you're going to go with?
Yes, well, DPW has worked with them before, and so we take their recommendation.
Earl? Okay, other questions?
We just have one, so when, when we do this, there are a number of things that aren't included in this, you know, dumps. of things that aren't included in this, you know, dumpsters, or the, I think maybe the refrigerant, I don't know if it's on this one or on something else. How do you budget for those possibilities?
So, the whole project was included in the quote that we received?
Okay.
Are you talking for the future?
Right.
Okay, so, we're, we are currently working with DPW to create a schedule, so in the future, we will have all these things planned out and, and have money set aside for them.
Okay, other questions? Please.
The only questions I have are on the FNF manual, there's exclusions, there's quite a list of things. Do we have an idea of what the cost would, might be with some of the exclusion, with some of the repair work needed to fix, if they need to cut or anything, or roofing, or is there anything, I mean, any asbestos? I mean, I don't think there's anything from thirteen years ago, we're hoping, yes, obviously, is there any major expectations or anything?
No, I don't believe there's any.
Okay.
There should be no surprises here.
So, they, that's what I was kind of wondering, too. So, they list all these things, but they're, but you're confident that this number covers everything?
Yes, okay.
Okay, other questions?
No.
All right, do we do two votes, one for the bid waiver and one for the transfer, or...
You should, yes.
Okay, could I get a motion to approve the request for a bid waiver for a replacement of the server room air conditioning? Mike moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor? Okay, and can I get a motion to request, to take, a motion to recommend approval of the transfer of sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to cover the cost of the server room air conditioning? Monica moves, Mike second, all in favor? Okay. All right, next up, take action, discuss and take action on a request for a bid waiver for the replacement of the police department water tank, and also discuss and take action on a request of a transfer to replace that water tank for twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, so, once again, we have a piece of equipment that is failing. We were making repairs on a leak that was happening with the water tank, had ordered a part for it, and in the meantime, the bottom of the tank basically is rotting away, so when they went to come take a look, they realized that there's more significant issues there. I believe the water tank is, is older from our, from the original building, so it's thirteen-plus years old at this point, which typically, a water tank lasts ten to fifteen years, so it's at end of life. There's, there's no way to repair it at this point, so we're hoping that we can get it replaced as soon as possible, so we don't lose water at the department.
Okay, when you all looked at that, there was nothing going on in terms of contamination from the water or outside source that may have caused the unit to fail, it really was just end of life?
Right.
This is the water heater, though, right? Not a water, like a regular water tank?
It's, it's, it's very large, but yes, it heats the water in the department.
Yes.
Okay.
And all of the connections are solid, right? They're not thirteen years old, and we're gonna have a problem with those?
No.
Okay.
I can't promise you anything, but this is what I'm told.
Okay.
And once again, we had quotes, we've gotten multiple quotes, and this was the quote we went with. All the quotes came from companies that we have used before.
Okay, so, we still need a bid waiver, even though we...
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Anything over ten thousand dollars that's not put out to a sealed bid, or it's not professional services.
Got it. Okay, so, could I get a motion to approve the request for a bid waiver for the replacement of the water tank? Mike moves, Sarah second, all in favor? Okay, and could I get a motion to approve the transfer of twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to replace that water tank? Monica moves, Sarah second, all in favor? Okay, great. All right, next up, discuss and take action on a request to waive bidding for the police department fire suppression system, and also discuss and take action on a request to transfer forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars to fund the replacement of the fire system.
Okay, so, we have people that come in to check our fire suppression equipment periodically, and the last time they were out, they noticed some corrosion in the pipes. Due to that, they sent it out for testing, and the testing came back saying that the pipes were being corroded through due to the air that's forced through them, and they are suggesting that we put a nitrogen system in it, so it forces nitrogen air through it, which will stop the corrosion, and leave the pipes that are there existing, they will continue to work, and the, due to the nitrogen system, will stop the corrosion. So, this is another piece of equipment that we're trying to work quickly on, it's an eight-week, so once we order it, we still have to wait eight weeks for that to come back, and when we originally were told about this issue, they said six months tops to wait to get it fixed. So, we're kind of at that point where if we wait too long and go for bids, it will be over the six months, and then the problem is if they corrode through, then you have to replace all the piping, which could be over a hundred thousand dollars, so we're looking to, they say when you replace it with these nitrogen systems, that it lasts for twenty, thirty years after.
But the corrosion's not so bad that...
Right.
If it stops now?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Questions on this transfer?
They can't, Kelly, they can't seal the corrosion or anything, right? Can't blow anything in there?
No, this, this is, and actually, this is being done all throughout the country now, they're finding the original systems they put in, all are having the same issues, there's no other way there than the nitrogen system, or replacing the whole piping.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, can I get, get a motion to waive the bidding for the police department fire suppression system? Mike moves, Sarah second, all in favor? And can I get a motion to recommend approval of the transfer of forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars to make the modifications to the fire suppression system just described? Sarah moves, Monica second, okay.
Can I just go back on the water tank?
Please.
I just wanted to make sure we had the correct number. I, I want, I think you had said twenty thousand...
Twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight five.
Yes, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, twenty-eight five.
Okay.
I had that right. I thought I did.
I might have misheard, I just wanted to make sure.
Twenty-eight thousand five hundred.
Twenty-eight five.
Right.
Yes, okay.
Yep, I had that. Discuss and take action on a request to transfer eight thousand eight hundred dollars to dispatch mini split air, split air conditioning.
Okay, so, this is just a transfer. Our communication center is in an area of the building that where the air conditioning and the heating come in, they compete, and unfortunately, this is a part of the building where we have people housed there twenty-four-seven, our dispatchers, so it gets very uncomfortable when the seasons change. So, in the winter, the, the systems compete against each other, one says, oh, it's cold out, I'm gonna throw hot air in, and then the AC says, ooh, it's hot in there, I'm gonna throw cold air in, and then it ends up being cold in the winter, and then the opposite happens in the summer. So, our poor dispatchers are opening windows and opening the doors, and fans are coming in, and it's very uncomfortable for them, especially when you have to sit there all day. So, DPW has tried multiple fixes, they tried closing one system, closing the other system, you know, anything that they can do, unfortunately, nothing works, and now they're suggesting that the only way to fix it is to put its own mini split system in that room.
And shut the others down?
Yes, into that room, yes.
So, who will control the dial on the, the dispatcher?
Who will dial this?
Um, that's a good question. I would assume the communications people that are working in there, but obviously, we will give them a range that they need to work. See, that's how it is now, you have a little gauge on the wall, and it only goes up and down five degrees. The problem is, you can set it at a degree, and it doesn't get there, it never gets there. So, with this system, we're hoping you can manage that.
Okay. Well, we want our dispatchers to be comfortable.
Yes, we do. Other questions on this?
I can just say something to the record. I know, I don't think anybody here were in the positions that we are now, back when the decisions were made to kind of put their building together the way it was put together. I'm not blaming anybody, there was no way you could foresee this, but I want to credit Captain Adema for doing the work, and she's done trying to respond to these challenges that have popped up, and working with Public Works has, and she inherited this, Captain Schreder's inherited it, we know the chief inherited it, and we're just trying to do our best, and I want to credit First Selectman and the Town Administrator for moving forward, creating a program, a system that Captain Adema kind of led on to, to prevent this type of thing from happening, moving forward. We're gonna have regularly scheduled assessments of the building, and we'll delve well in advance when items and pieces of equipment reach their end-of-life stage, and we won't have the surprises, we're hoping. I just wanted to...
Yeah, just, I appreciate that comment, just to add to that, one of the things that we talked about as we were reviewing all of this was to get much more active involvement from Public Works and the management of that building, simply because those guys are experts, and none of us are, and one of the good things about that is that they'll help stay on top of things, just like what you said, but also relieve you all from having to worry about whether the air conditioning's working, and allow you to get back to the other work that you have to do, which is non-trivial. And so, I, I felt that was actually an excellent discussion, and I think it's gonna lead to something where you guys are gonna be much happier. The one thing that I'd emphasized from that meeting was this idea of one neck to choke, right? So, having a single-point accountability for all these things, where there's one person you can go to, one person who's staying on top of this, one person who can talk fluently about all the building systems, and can help ensure that we have a holistic approach to that. So, bravo, I thought that ended up quite well, and it will help us stay ahead of these things, where we get to the goal of no surprises, or at least minimal surprises. So, you have enough of those in your day-to-day work?
I mean, there wasn't a course at the Academy in building management systems?
I wish there were.
Well, maybe you can go and teach one, that, probably.
Yeah, right. Okay, we do need to approve that, so, just, could I get a motion to approve the transfer of eight thousand eight hundred dollars for the mini split air conditioning? Monica moves, or Monica moves, Mike second, all in favor? Okay, great. All right. Last but not least, discuss and take action on a request to endorse the addition of license plate, of the license plate...
Did you have waiver, the waiver first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Discuss and take action on a request to waive bidding requirements for the acquisition of stationary license plate readers, and then a transfer to cover the first-year costs of the lease for that equipment.
Do you want me to go into what license plate readers are, or do you want me to just discuss?
Everybody's aware of that, or would you like an explanation? Okay, it was the sixty-second version, or, we've all kind of heard this, so...
Okay, sixty-second version is, we are looking to put stationary license plate readers throughout town, usually into, somewhere into or exiting the town, so that we can pick up on criminal activity while it's happening in real time. It takes a snapshot of the back license plate and gives you the information of that vehicle, so what type of vehicle it is, what color, any stickers that you can figure out which car it is, if it's involved in criminal activity, so, you know, felonies, stolen vehicles, Amber alerts, which isn't a crime, but we need to know about that, Amber alerts, you know, any serious crimes, domestic violence, things like that. So, that's what we're looking to do.
Okay, so, this is, the equipment that, and the company that you've selected, it's used by other towns, right? And this actually is going to be a leased equipment, correct?
Right, so, we have done extensive research on different companies that provide this equipment, and we found that this company that I'm talking about, Flock Security, they are leased cameras that they, you pay a fee every year, they come out, they service it, the software, maintenance, everything is on them. All the information is stored in the cloud, and if there's any updates or new equipment, they just come and replace it. So, we are looking to do a five-year lease, and the reason we picked Flock is because they integrate with our current equipment, so our body cameras and our evidence.com, which is where we house all of our, all of our body cam videos and evidence and reports and all these things, they all talk to each other, so the equipment in the vehicle, in-house, and now, these cameras will all talk to each other.
And they were the only ones that had that?
These were the, right, these are the, this company is the only company that provides that service.
That's the reason for the waiver, is they're sole provider.
Yeah, based on the briefings I've heard, I think this is an excellent and timely investment, and will help all of you in renewable ways on all kinds of things, and it's consistent with best practice that we're seeing in other towns, and they...
Right, most, most towns in Fairfield County and across Connecticut...
They already have it, right.
Have some sort of license plate reader already.
Right, and you've solved some crimes based on license plate readers, or information from those plate readers from other towns supplied to you?
Correct, yes, so, we, we use Stanford, obviously, since they're our neighbor, quite frequently, New Canaan, Bridgeport, you know, we, we even call down to New York if there's some, you know, somebody lives in New York, we'll call down and try to get...
And is Norwalk about to get one of these systems as well?
Norwalk is, Norwalk is waiting as well, yet, they're just waiting for their funding, but, yes.
Okay, so, the, so what we're approving is the first year of the leased, leased cost, which includes installation, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
What you're doing is, they've asked the Board of Finance to add it to the fiscal twenty-five budget, so, respecting the budget process, they're coming to ask you to agree that it should go in the budget.
Okay, perfect. Questions for the captain on this?
Yeah, I have a question on, on just the contract, so, it shows that you have, that you received a discount, thirty-seven five?
So, we did some negotiating...
Right.
And they worked with us, I don't know if you would necessarily call it a discount, but they worked with us as far as we wanted X, Y, and Z that they weren't giving us before, and we made some discussions, and they agreed to, yes.
So, going forward, it's thirty-seven five a year?
No, I, um, I don't...
That's what it says.
Yeah, I just, Kate, when...
No, it says thirty-nine five. Thirty-nine five, but I think the discount...
Yes, so, the first year, there's an added cost because of the installation, after that, it's just the software and the maintenance and all that stuff that you get with it.
Okay.
Right, so, it is, it is less in the years after, yes.
The discount was thirty-seven five, the annual recurring was thirty-nine five.
Okay, because the five years are thirty-seven five, isn't two oh five?
No, it's thirty-nine five, the discount from the original price was thirty-seven five, so, thirty-nine five at four years, plus the forty-seven.
Okay.
So, yes, so, the first year's forty-seven thousand three hundred...
Okay, that's where I'm off.
Annual recurring is thirty-nine five.
Got it, okay. All right. Okay, I'm good.
Other questions? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the request for the bid waiver related to the license plate reader lease? Sarah moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? Okay, can I get a motion to approve recommendation of the transfer of...
No, there's no transfer.
There's no transfer on this, we're adding to the budget.
Your budget.
Okay, so, that's it, then?
You're, you're adding, you're endorsing the addition of it to the, to the budget.
We gotta split this up more, I can hardly read this, okay. Discuss and take action on a request to endorse addition of the license plate reader to the fiscal year twenty-five budget request. Monica moves, Mike, Mike seconds, all in favor? Okay, thank you both, I appreciate that.
Thank you all, appreciate your time.
Now, you can go watch the game.
Yes. You come.
Okay, next item discussed. Thank you, Chief, Captain. Discuss and take action on a request to approve the annual sidewalk sales. So, we've done this in the past, it's gonna take place July eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth this year, and as they've done in the past, they're requesting suspension and waiver of the town zoning regulations about businesses like this participating, well, out on the sidewalk, as well as waiver of things like parking restrictions, is there, allowing them to put out signage, that's, that's the gist of it. Sarah?
Two questions, has this been looked at by, I mean, is there, do they need to get a permit from them, or no?
From...
Planning and zoning?
No, usually, planning and zoning, to send them a letter, reminds them of the rules, like, basically, the, the rule thing is, people are not members of the chamber...
Right.
Are not allowed to participate.
Right. So, my bigger concern is that they're also asking for Darien Commons and Goodwives to be included in this?
Yeah, was, Darien, was Commons in last year?
No.
No.
Because it wasn't really open.
Yeah, well, there are a lot of businesses over there, so...
Okay, is that bad, or what?
No, it's just, I think parking, parking could be a concern, and it's just, how is that gonna be structured, and, you know, you've got, parking is in the middle of where we can't, all the, it's very difficult to manage the, you know, walkers and sidewalks and folks, I'm concerned more about that, that's all.
We can only... We can only, we have no say in what happens at Darien Commons or Goodwives, because those are private property.
Right.
So it's, they can act, you as the board cannot say A or N to that. That's up to the property owners, because they're all, this is about basically the post road, any place where there's, where they're on public property.
Got it.
Well, and that's why the rule pertains to the sidewalks and then the parking in back, which we.
Got it.
So Kate, you know, they have this, that the town would therefore, the town would therefore shut down sales of any non-participants, so have we had any issues with that? Have you heard anything about the police having to actually, I think because if you're not a chamber, you're not a member, you're not supposed to be doing this?
Yeah, I've heard, I've heard anecdotally that it's happened in the past.
Okay. But that's what?
But that's worse, yeah, we say to them that you have to.
Right.
Do that.
Right, and that's what Jeremy's doing, he's sending a letter, saying, okay, okay. All right, I'm good.
Okay. Other questions on that? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the annual sidewalk sale program as described in the letter of March 20th? All in favor? Or, Mike moves, Sarah second, all in favor? Okay, thank you. All right. So before we get to the appointments and then minutes, which will wrap up this meeting, the Board of Education has a couple of security-related investments that they want to move forward, okay? Some of those have elements that are really not appropriate for public discussion, and so what's happened with security requests like that in the past is that we can get a separate sort of executive session briefing on something like that, and then go forward to a public vote. No one's here from the Board of Education tonight, but Dr. Adley is standing by on his phone, so we could move to go into new business, and then move to go into an executive session. He would be able to brief you and answer questions on that, if you would like. That might enable us to go ahead and take a vote on that tonight, which would refer the dollar amount associated with this of $1,074,000 to the Board of Finance. Or, we could not consider that this evening and request a more fulsome, I guess, well-planned briefing from the administration, or wait until that briefing is done at the Board of Finance, meaning at their next meeting. Any comments, questions, discussion?
I mean, I'm always interested in more fulsome presentation, unless it's a time-sensitive, you know, matter, I mean, I'm prepared to ask Dr. Adley questions now, but.
Well, we could do that, and if it still feels like more information's needed, then we could get a separate convene meeting anytime and have an executive session by zone pretty easily, if we need to do that. What would you all like to do? Would you like to wait and have a separate executive session on another day? We could arrange for those professionals, because then Marcy could participate, since she's not available tonight.
Is there a time stamp that they need this done?
When is the Board of Finance meeting? When are they gonna consider this?
For the budget? The meeting's tomorrow night.
They're voting tomorrow.
They're voting tomorrow night.
And they were hoping to have this on the budget?
I believe, let me just see if I can find the, the, looking for the email that had the, hang on, I believe that their intent was to request this at the April 9th. I don't think the Board of Finance has another meeting scheduled in April.
Is this on the agenda?
Hmm, good question. Open the website and go to Board of Finance Agenda. I, yes, they have it as a discussion, take action on a request for special appropriation, yeah.
Okay. Do you know if they're gonna have a presentation on this topic?
It does not, on their agenda, it does not appear that way, but I don't know. Let me, if I can just see if I can pull up that note from the Board of Ed.
Oh, here's a note from Palin, he says, well, he says, "We are going to take it up at a meeting later this month and plan to invite the chief, Leon, everybody to come to that meeting."
Okay.
So maybe they're not voting on it tomorrow, or? It's later this month.
Well, the agenda says discussion items, and the, it says discuss and take action, but I suppose that doesn't, they don't have to take action just because they said they were going to.
Okay.
Does the Board of Education need this by a particular date?
It's difficult to say.
Because I haven't seen any of the documents, I don't know.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything.
All right.
Then I suggest you wait.
Okay, oh, okay.
I only saw this today, so.
All right. We will take this up at another day, and I will arrange for an executive session, and I'll try to get the Board of Finance there, and maybe all, both boards can have a full presentation on this by the open parties. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. Next up, we have some votes on appointments to boards to take up. These are all the folks that we interviewed at our previous executive session. So first one is up is reappearance, an appointment of four members to the Architectural Review Board. Kate, do you have those?
No, we don't. Let me see, give me a minute. I'm sure I do have them. So we're talking ARB?
Yes.
Okay, you have four reappearance. Alexandra Low Potinsky, apologies if I messed up her name.
Yeah, keep in mind, there's four members and two alternates, or, not one alternate, sorry.
Right, this is a, this is a.
This is both for ARB.
Right. Rebecca Morrison, those two both terms ending June 30th, 2025. Liz Geiger, reappearance, term ending June 30th, 2027. And then Kathleen Post-Paul Selly, an appointment, term ending 2027.
Okay, can I do a single motion to?
Yes.
Okay, could I get a motion to approve all recommended candidates for the Architectural Review Board? Monica moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? Okay. Next up is reappearance of two members of the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission.
It's a reappearance of an alternate member.
You got the alternate.
David Riley.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought the alternates were included.
No, David Riley is the alternate, term ending June 30th, 27.
Okay, could I get a motion to appoint David Riley as an alternate to the ARB? Sarah moves, Mike second? Okay. Next up, reappearance of two members of the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission.
All righty. Autumn Howard, reappearance, term ending November 30th, 2025, and Nancy Natali, also term ending 11/30/2025.
Okay, could I get a motion to approve the appointment of Autumn Howard and Nancy Natali to the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission? Monica moves, Sarah second, all in favor? Okay. Next up is reappearance of a member of the Environmental Protection Commission.
And that would be Peter McGinnis, term ending June 30th, 2026.
Could I get a motion to approve Peter McGinnis's reappearance to the Environmental Protection Commission? Mike moves, Monica second, all in favor? Okay. Lastly, is reappearance of a member of the Human Services Commission.
And that is Kate DeRocher, term ending November 30th, 2026.
Could I get a motion to approve Kate DeRocher as a member of the Human Services Commission? Sarah moves, Mike second, all in favor? Okay. All right, I think that's it for appointments. We have two sets of minutes. One is for March 11th, 2024, and the second one is just from the appointment meeting that we had, that's very short, and that was from March 25th. Does anyone have any edits or corrections to those two sets of minutes?
Nope.
Okay. Could I get a motion to approve both the March 11th and March 25th meeting minutes? Sarah moves, Mike second, all in favor? Okay. All right, I think that's it for this evening. Kate, anything else?
Agenda review.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, agenda review, thank you. Yes, anyone for agenda review? Mike?
Yeah, I have, we've been getting some comment recently about the flag policy, I think, based on some of the correspondence I've seen, and the fact that it's been a period of time since we enacted our current policy, that it's ripe and proper for a thoughtful review.
Okay, that's duly noted, we will put that on the next agenda. Okay. Anything else for agenda review? Okay. Kate, could you make sure we get that on the next agenda?
Yeah, remember, the next agenda is a joint department heads meeting, Monday, the 22nd.
Okay, do we have any regular business that day, or?
Um, hang on a second, I think we do have at least one.
So that's a question, that's a morning meeting, would you all want to discuss that at that meeting, or would you prefer to do the, it would be a May meeting?
You know, I think probably better at a regular time, as opposed to the.
Morning time.
Morning. I know sometimes I have difficulty with that. We did get a number of letters, in case of any of those people want to participate in public comment, I think our evening meetings are more.
We can do that.